I'd like to call to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, our regular meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Let's do roll call. Hopefully, we will have some people joining us a little later. So I don't see, um, or Sharon. Josh, you're here, obviously, right?
Present.
Josh Mickelson. Mark Freeman? Is that in relation? You guys are on mute. There you go.
Hi, Steve. It's Bill Freeman. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. Are you in relation to Mark? I'm just curious.
I'm his father.
Okay. Do you know if he's joining us tonight?
I don't. I don't know, Steve.
All right. Well, hopefully, he can.
Okay.
Give him a text. All right. But going on down, I am so sorry. Joanne Hogan is here. And Ally Rice is normally an alternate, but Ally, I'd like you to join us as a full-fledged member tonight. Very exciting.
Woo-hoo, I'm ready.
All right. Well, with that being said, we have a quorum, so let's move forward with our first application, which is application 21- dash twelve, twelve. You know, Laura, can I consult with you for just a second?
You can do it.
Flip our agenda in the hopes that another commissioner joins us, because-
You can certainly do that. You just need to make a motion to amend the agenda to change the order.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to flip our applications. Unfortunately, as I'm a property owner, on one of the applications, I'm gonna have to abstain for the vote, so hopefully, we have someone else joining us. I can be on the board and hear the presentation. But when it comes time to vote, with that being said, we're going to flip our agenda. I'd like to make a motion that first, we'll hear application 21-13 of the Simsbury Public Schools. Can someone second that?
Seconded.
All right. Laura, do I have to do all those in favor, or we're just good to go? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Ally?
Aye.
All right. That leaves nobody to vote against it or to abstain, so it's unanimous. We will flip-flop our applications and we'll move right along with application 21-13 of Simsbury Public Schools owner, SLR International Corporation applicant for variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 3.9, to allow grandstand and press box within the side yard setbacks of the property located at 34 Farms Village Road. Who would like to present this application? Is there anyone?
Yep. Hold on, I'm just trying to turn my camera on here. It's not starting. Can you see me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kevin Fusiliere. I'm a principal landscape architect with SLR International Corporation out of Cheshire, Connecticut. Some of you may know our former company, My Loan &amp; McBroom. I have a PowerPoint presentation to go over. I see Jason Casey from Simsbury Public Schools is on. I'm not sure if he wants to say anything before I go into my presentation.
Uh, no, you can jump right in.
Okay. So I assume I can share my screen. Go ahead. Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. I already introduced myself. I'll be representing Simsbury Public Schools. So the project we're talking about is on the Simsbury High School campus. It's in regards to the existing grandstand and press box on the western side of the property. The grandstand and press box serve the stadium field, we'll call it, with the synthetic turf and the running track. Uh, this is just a bird's eye aerial, getting us a little closer. You can see the grandstand structure. I've dashed in the approximate property line, which runs behind a hedgerow of mature evergreen trees. And then just a close-up of the existing structure. It's a steel grandstand structure with a detached, well, an added-on press box on the rear. Also, part of this project is a small shed to the, uh, to the north of the grandstand. The existing grandstands, these are just some images. It's a rather older structure. I'll go through some of its deficiencies. Beneath it is a concrete masonry block storage shed. And this image to the right just shows some of the substructure. So the existing conditions, we're proposing to remove, demolish the existing grandstand and press box along with that existing shed and reconstruct a new one over the existing footprint. The red represents the removal and demolition and removal of the structure. The green is the, that CMU building that is below, and that is proposed to stay. Currently, the structure is within this dash line, which is the 40-foot building setback line, why we're here tonight. From varying distance at the corners, but it's its closest point, it's 21.7 feet from the property line. So a good portion of the structure and the shed are within the building setback. This is just a cross-section of the existing, uh, press box and grandstand, showing the relationship of the seating, how it's really built into that structure below. Actually serves as, uh, the roof for that structure now, currently. And then the press box, where you can see the structure was probably added on at the back, but I don't know if that is the case, or if it was built at the same time. So the proposed structure is, uh, is much bigger. And you can see that the setbacks, the press box actually pulls in, that's this darker square in the middle. So it's set in a little bit, but the corners, especially the north corner gets closer to the property line. The structure, you can see, we've outlined the existing footprint of the grandstand and press box to be removed in that shed. This is an elevation of the proposed improvements, a cross-section, where you can again see the existing structure in red. And the new structure is obviously detailed more. There will, the proposed improvements separate the storage building from the grandstand structure. Um, and as I mentioned, pulls the press box in a couple feet. So why are we requesting a variance? The existing high school property is zoned R40 low-density residential. And as mentioned, per section 3.9, uh, the side yard setback in those R40 zone is 40 feet. The existing grandstand originally constructed in the 60s is undersized for the current school population. It is not constructed to the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and current state building codes. The existing grandstand and press box are currently located within the side yard setback. The proposed grandstand will also be located within the side yard setback. But as mentioned, the new press box will be slightly further away from the property line. So what are our hardships? The existing grandstand, as mentioned, is not up to current ADA and state building codes. There's insufficient means of egress for the number of seats. The access ramps exceed ADA allowable pitch or slope. There's insufficient ADA and companion seating areas. There's inadequate fall protection on some of the railings. And there's insufficient handrails on the stairs. The existing grandstand and press boxes, as mentioned, are undersized for the school population and spectator events. And we'll talk about it more, but there's no other location on the site to accommodate these facilities. Just some pictures of, uh, you know, the, the press box during a game where the press, the grandstands are full, people are standing on the fence line. And then the very crowded press box, um, on the right. So what are the alternatives that we looked at? We looked at, we did study about retrofitting the existing grandstand to meet current code. And while things can be done and added to it, given the age of the structure and the nature of the components, it would be impossible to certify that the structure would be sound by adding the, the additional weight and wind loads that would come with those additional components. Also, keeping the same size doesn't meet the school's needs for additional seating capacity and press box space. So what about reconfiguring the proposed structure to eliminate or lessen the setback enclosure? And that existing storage building really dictates, uh, how this grandstand can be constructed. Um, and that storage building is very important to the school, because there is limited storage on the site for things related to the track and field events. And then relocate the grandstand and press box to another location. And, you know, we have this existing facility of the track and synthetic turf field with lighting. So that's not moving. And the other side of the field, we have the parking lot. So there's very limited space, um, to fit these facilities. And by moving the facilities, if we were able to, to the other side, outside the setback, we would be directing more sound and spectator sound, PA sound to the west, to the neighboring properties, uh, which I don't believe is desirable, even if it was possible. So that's my, uh, presentation, and I'm happy to go over any other piece of it, or any piece of it, and show, go back to any of the slides and answer any questions that you have.
Mark, um, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you go back to page nine, just because that wasn't in our packet, or at least maybe I couldn't find it? But I found it interesting. Oh, now I see it in the packet, too. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this is just, uh, the, the proposed site plan with little additional information I wanted to show you.
But it shows us where you're asking for additional non-conformity, which is a tough one, just to be upfront. Uh, what about concessions? Are you, I see you're removing the concession shed, but I don't see plans to incorporate a new one.
That's not part of this project to, uh, anything with concessions. This is only about grandstand and press box. Jason may be able to answer more about that if they have future plans.
Sure. Um, the athletics director was, uh, had no problem with losing that particular piece. We can revisit it at a later date, but it was not, uh, heavily utilized, according to him.
That seems like, uh, you know, it's better to have a big picture than, um, removing a component that is somewhat a concern, because if you're gonna come back for an even further variance, I'd rather just be hit with everything at once, so we can negotiate how you can fit the full-scale project here. Um, why is so much attention being drawn to, I mean, I just roughly know the storage facility under, underneath the stands? But my extended knowledge is, it's literally just a cinder block shell, if I'm not mistaken. Why is that so important to not rebuild it when it's almost peanuts compared to the size, the scope of this project? It seems it seems unusual that you would be stuck on keeping that when you're literally rebuilding this from the ground up, except for that. Is there a reason?
More of location for the storage proximity, the type of equipment that's in there is field use. So there was discussion about essentially where the director wanted the storage to be.
But the implication was, the reason that the structure has the footprint it has, was to facilitate the continued use of the existing storage. And I'm just wondering if we asked you to knock it down and move it, which does not seem like a huge cost restraint, what does that allow to happen to this proposed, um, plan?
I'll take that. One, one reason to not demo it um, as part of this project and to keep it, is we're in a FEMA floodplain here. So if it was to be reconstructed, it would have to have open bottom to allow water to flow through, which would not be conducive to storing certain athletic equipment. So there's value in having it the way it is, and in the location it is right now.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah. We, uh, about two years ago, we did work with the athletics group um, and just did a quick feasibility study for a, a larger dedicated storage building elsewhere on site. Um, and that project may happen down the road. It would not be in the setback, obviously. Um, but that was just feasibility study and preliminary cost estimates, and, uh, the costs were rather high. So that project was tabled.
So still, to, to circle back to my initial query, if we demoed that, I'm not saying we have to, but I do want to be aware of the options. If we demoed it, what ramifications would that have to the potential to keep this out of the setback area?
Well, I, I don't think it would keep us out of the setback. It, it would allow us to lower the structure a little bit. It's really driving the angle of the seating. And it, that's really it. We, we could just lower the structure, um, but that wouldn't take it out of the setback.
So it would have essentially the same footback with the lower elevation?
Correct.
Okay.
And the elevation we're proposing is matching the existing elevation, more or less, but we, you can see in this one, we just have slightly more pitch to separate and allow a new roof to be installed on that, that CMU building.
Okay, what about the walkways with all those switchbacks? I assume those are ADA compliant. Those are the, they're not in the setback. Is there a reason you don't have those just going straight? Um, I believe it would be east and west. I could be wrong, or north and south, rather. Why, why do you have those setbacks, which obviously do further encumber the setback zone?
That was a request of the, um, athletic director. Um, rather than have a long run, they seem to prefer the switchback, um, ramp.
Was this run by the fire marshal? Because that seems like a, uh, a fire code concern, to be quite frank. You have one, two, three, four, four switchbacks to get out in an emergency.
So this plan, the next step would be, um, to go to planning and to go to zoning with this, and that's when the fire marshal would weigh in. But this is a, a common ramp configuration that we have used elsewhere.
And what's the width of that ramp?
It's five feet.
Okay. Okay, other commissioners, I, I did some of my initial queries. What do you have for questions on this particular agenda item?
Steve, this is Bill Freeman. Is, is this an appropriate time for us to pipe in?
Yeah, yeah, by all means, public input's always welcome. There's no-
Okay, thank you. So my wife and I live on the property adjacent, just west of the grandstand.
Across the brook.
Across the brook. We're at Two Weldon Way, and we're one of the four houses that are in that complex.
You're the closest one, I'll be honest.
Yes, we are.
Concerned about how this ramified your particular property value, to be quite frank.
Yes, and it's, it's-
That's correct.
Us greatly.
So when we first moved in here four and a half years ago, uh, the sound was horrific. And Jeff was good enough to work, not necessarily with us, but in, in having a new sound system installed, which was omnidirectional, so that it pointed the sound back towards the school away from our property. And it helped a great deal. So in keeping with that, uh, I know we're not talking about a sound system right now, but I hope any type of sound system will certainly keep that in mind going forward with the new structure. And the other thing we're concerned about is, right now, uh, as I'm sitting here in my kitchen, I'm looking across the brook, and I can see the lights uh, that are on right now. I know none of you can see what I can see right now.
It's like a landing field.
But that's a nightly occurrence. And I know there's probably not much we can do about that, and we're, we're talking about the grandstand, not the lighting system. But anything that could be done to lower the structure itself, because again, the boundary between our properties is a, is nothing more than a chain-link fence, which the school replaced about a year and a half, two years ago. And then a row of greenery, arborvitae's and all, that have decayed badly over the years from invasive species and whatever. So my first question is, can the structure be lowered at all? And I know you were just talking about that, Steve, with that existing concrete structure below it. And second of all, what can be done to enhance the greenery or anything else between the properties to camouflage? So we don't, we're not constantly looking at the lights and the grandstand. The noise on a Friday night for a football game is fine. I welcome that. I played football when I was much younger. And that's fine. I understand that. But we're looking right now at a visual and a sound problem. So I'm wondering, as we, as you move forward with this project, what can be done to benefit our position, so to speak?
Or clarification for the commissioners, too. The Freemans live in that building directly to the left of the grandstand, where he's got the cursor right now.
That's correct.
Just so you can see how important, these are definitely the neighbors that are the, by far, the closest neighbors. Not by far, you can see the next neighbor right behind the property line box.
Right.
Um, Jason or Kevin, do you want to take that? I mean, if you use some of the new energy-efficient lighting, wouldn't that be more directionalized?
Well, first, I'll just, uh, respond about the PA system. The plan would be to reuse the existing PA system and attach it to the new press box. So there would be no change, um, with the announced PA system. As for lighting, I, I'll leave it to Jason. I don't know if there's been any discussion about, um, any, any projects related to that.
Oh, it's not something that we've had in, in front of us. The grandstand project is really working within the existing footprint and using the existing, as, as just said, the existing sound system. There hasn't been any, uh, lighting improvements that we're looking at.
Oh, does the press box currently reach above that green screen, the bushes? Or is it hidden?
Yes.
So you can see the press box on the other side of the hedge?
I can see the top two, uh, levels of seating. So sometimes I'm in the kitchen, and I feel like, you know, people are turning around that they can see me, or it's, it's, it's invasive, you know, it, it really is.
Um, and, and not to be argumentative, but that was there when you purchased the house. Has that hedge changed since you purchased the house?
Well, you know what? When the first, uh, season that we were here, the, um, the arborvitae's were very healthy and thick. And then we had a storm, a tree came down, knocked three of them down. And then all of a sudden, this became this open view. So between the lights and seeing people and, you know, uh, the sound, it, it, even, I mean, our neighbors, we told them that we were gonna be, uh, you know, in this meeting this evening. And they were like, oh, please, please, please tell them to lower it, lower it, lower that grandstand. Because they're even higher up than we are, so they really can see it.
And as I said earlier, the, the invasive species, these horrible vines and stuff are, and I've had landscapers try and remove them as much as possible. But the, I don't know what the original, I don't know what to call it, when, when, when this line of, of, uh, arborvitae's and other greenery was put in, what the responsibilities were, but we'd like to see it enhanced, if anything, and, and my wife and I are willing to contribute to that in some means.
You do, you pay taxes?
We pay taxes, and it affects the value of our home, exactly, Steve.
Yeah.
And, and, and may I also say, Jeff, uh, has been, the AD, has been wonderful about the sound system, and anytime
Yeah.
I, I reach out to him, whether it's a weekend, or a night, or whatever, sometimes the kids break into the, uh, have broken into the press box, and they put on their own music at ridiculous volume, and-
And even Hot Meadow Country Club has complained because they can hear it. You know, we're in a bowl here, and it just ricochets, all that sound. It's amazing how you hear everything. And their choice of music, you know, has very interesting lyrics.
Kevin, if I could ask you one question, um, just because obviously the Freemans have brought up the height being a concern of theirs, and you've brought up, uh, the main, maintaining the storage structure as a concern of yours. If I'm not mistaken, if you replace one wall at a time, you are allowed to rebuild something that is non-conforming in the footprint, which would obviously have a different height. Is there something prohibiting you from doing that? Because I mean, we're really talking about a cinder block box.
Right.
It's not anything pretty or multi-dimensional. Well, it's multi-dimensional, but you, you know, it, it's really-
It's old.
We want everyone to win here. You know, we want you to have what you want. We want them to have what they want. So let's work towards that goal. And that goal, obviously, one of the things the Freemans have said is if we could lower this a little, they would be, you know, uh, appreciative.
Yes.
So why can't we just replace one wall at a time, keep it where it is, and have it just a couple feet lower? Because I remember when I've been in there, granted, that was decades ago. We didn't stack stuff super high. It was more, you know, fill, it was filled with all sorts of crap, but it wasn't stacked up high. So is that something that could be done? Or maybe that's a question for Laura? Laura, you here?
I'm here. Um, anything done in a floodplain that's a substantial improvement, which is gonna be anything more than 50% of what the structure is actually worth, it's going to have to be brought up to our current floodplain codes. Um, so you can replace it, but when you start replacing things, you, you are, it, it probably will be more expensive, because I don't, I assume that structure, I haven't been in it, meets any floodplain codes.
No, I, I believe it does not.
But if you were to replace a roof, wouldn't you be allowed to re-roof the structure that was in a floodplain?
You'd be allowed to re-roof a structure, but it's, it really comes down to monetary and what's considered a substantial improvement. So any kind of work would have to be brought up, actually, to Mike Liddon, the, the certified floodplain manager for the town.
So if we knocked out a couple courses, though, it would not be, I'm just trying to work with everyone, but it would not be changing the valuation significantly if we could maintain the lower blocks being left in place. Is that correct? Kevin, how, how far down are we talking to facilitate the lowering of this structure? Are we talking two feet, or are we talking four feet, or other?
I think it's about two feet.
So that's what I mean. You could, I mean, we saw cut it. I, I, not to say it, but it's viable. Um, okay, so that being said, the other question was the lights. Uh, Mr. Freeman, if I can ask, are you talking about the parking lot lights or the field illumination lights?
The field illumination light, Steve.
And are those the ones that are on the poles, um, around, or are they actually on this structure?
No, they're on poles.
Okay.
They're independent poles.
Yeah, they're, technically, I'm sorry to say, that won't be in our purview tonight. I apologize for that. Well, I don't apologize, but, you know, it's back.
I understand.
Bob, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Me? So, um, I know quite a bit about this, because Dave Holden, who's a former business manager, and I, uh, worked on the artificial turf field and that field for two or three years before the first turf field went in. And, um, so, and when we put in, I'm just gonna address the lights for a second first. The lights were a big issue, and, I mean, a big issue at that time. Similar to now, only, uh, we went around personally and talked to all the residents that lived there at that time to explain to them, there were a lot of misinformation, explain to them what we were doing, and the town, uh, we got the town to comply with what's called dark skies, which is a very, very high-tech set of standards for fields like this, where the light has a very, even though it may not seem that way to you right this second, the light has a very low spillover rate, and it must meet the specific criteria in order to comply with the dark skies regulation. So I just tell you that for kind of background and information, because there was a huge amount of energy expended to make sure that the lights were not the old-fashioned lights that really had a great spillover and were, were, would have been challenging. I live almost as close as the Freemans. I live, I'm looking at the field right now from my home, which is, um, substantially elevated. I'm looking down on the far end zone, if you were driving by the football field. Our home looks down on that property, and we've been here for almost 40 years. And, um, and I, so I hear everything, and I, um, uh, I see all the lights and all that stuff. Uh, we're just substantially higher, uh, than the Freemans. Uh, but I, uh, know exactly where the Freemans live. Their property at the end of ours kind of backs up to it. So that's one thing. The, I had a couple of questions. One, the storage, uh, facility underneath the stands, I, I'm very familiar with it, because I used to be a coach on the varsity, uh, football- football team, I used to coach on the varsity football team. And so we use that area to store things and I hope that whatever the plan is that, and I don't know what it's like in now. It looks like it's got a better garage door on it than it used to. But it became very musty and things mold, got moldy in there. So I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the conversation has been about doing something about that or addressing that. But I would, I know how important the storage is, but I, it's, I would hope they could do something about the humidity level in there, especially in the summer months. The other thing was, I had a question about two other parts of the stadium. One is the concession stand. I haven't heard anything about that. I, I have always wished they would, that a flood would wash that away and there would be, have to build a new one or something, someplace. The second is the visitor stands, which we, at the time we did all of this and redid everything, there was a discussion about whether we do the visitor stands, which were awful then. They didn't even have a fence around them. Or whether we did lights and we decided to do lights, which I really feel was the right thing to do. But is there any discussion, the second question I have is, is any discussion or are you doing something about the visitor stands? There isn't a team that comes here, doesn't complain about it. They can't see the field because they can't see over the players. The facility is not ADD compliant. And it's, it's just not a, I mean, if you go to any other school, the visitor stands are at least ADD compliant and they're elevated off the ground. So I would want to know if that was being addressed too. I'm very happy that they're going to redo the stands because personally I feel they're kind of dangerous. And just a kind of a ticking time bomb. So I hope they do, I hope you do really put something very nice up. And, and do keep the, keep the sound pointed in toward the school. I think the Freemans have a good point there. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate it. Is there any other members of the general public that would like to speak on this application? Okay, hearing none, then let's, um, let's go back to the commissioners. Joey, did you have any additional questions?
Um, not if, if they have no, if they looked into replacing the storage shed and decided it's not part of this process, then is there a way to lower the grandstand as it is designed? Even keeping that shed there?
Uh, my concern with lowering it is that if we're keeping the same angle, then the only way to lower it is to make them smaller. It's to remove the top tier. Otherwise you're changing the angle and sending the seats back farther, but then we're talking about, we're already, the reason for the meeting is how close we are to the setback currently. So that would be my only concern about that. The photo that was shown previously, uh, these bleachers are quite undersized for the student population. So losing any rows would be a difficult sell.
But if you're going further out to the sides.
Can you make it longer?
Can you make it longer and lose a couple of top rows?
Okay, sorry.
That's what I'm saying. Is there a way to make this grandstand lower and not lose seating? I mean, you're making it wider. Can it, that's, that wouldn't accommodate. I know, I've sat on those seats many times. I know that they get very crowded. I understand that. But you've made it longer. It can't be longer than you've made it to accommodate for taking down maybe two back rows or whatever it would be to bring the grandstand down to a better height, to bring the press box down to a better height.
We've actually been, due to the financial component of this, looking at shrinking the sides of this, not keeping it. So it's, the design is somewhat in flux from side to side. The, the how far back hasn't been an issue. That's why we're comfortable having a zoning discussion because we're not talking about changing the, the distance to the setback. But those side areas are already under discussion in terms of can we afford to, to build it out that far?
So yeah, to Jason's point, I put this alternate site plan in the back. Well, not ideal with the seating capacity. It's what he is talking about potentially, you know, shrinking this structure. But again, it doesn't change the height, height of it.
But why, why wouldn't you be able to just lower it and keep it that wide? I don't understand why that wouldn't be an option if you're talking about a reduction.
The, the other potential, and we, we would just have to explore it, is as he said, losing these rows on either side of the press box. However, the press box height would remain the same. But the press box is enclosed and so it's a solid sidewalls and back wall.
With, with losing the sides and then if we lost the two top rows, we're actually proposing a smaller grandstand than what's there now.
Not if you kept the sides and lost the back two rows, you're, you're trying to, you know, manipulate the spin here.
I have one more option and I think that's what we're talking about.
Now, what? Do you have it ready now or it's another option that you have a back burner?
No, what you see on the screen is just, I blocked out the seats that are potentially could be lost, which would be the top three rows. We don't, I don't know what this does to the seating capacity. So per one, a previous comment, we might actually have to go a little more to the north and south. So if this is something that.
Well, it's a reduction in non-conformity. To be honest, when we grant these variances, almost always we are asking for a reduction in non-conformity. I'll be honest, the applicants that have come and asked for more non-conformity, well, I'm, I'm being quite frank and I'm not just being negative. I can't remember one that has asked for this far of a variance. And I love our school. I love the grandstands. I love our athletics. I love all of it. I want to see it rebuilt. It's a, it's an eyesore and a safety hazard. But I also want to see it done in my role of, you know, chair of the ZBA with the reduction of non-conformity, not just what the athletic director wishes for. There's neighbors that are paying taxes. They should have a say equally as to how we proceed with this necessary improvement. I, I don't deem this as negligible. I deem it as something we have to do, but it's my personal feeling, I don't speak for all commissioners, that what you've presented now on the screen is sort of what I think I'm looking for as a commissioner. It's a reduction of non-conformity. And then furthermore, just, and I'll stop my long-winded speech here. The, the switchbacks, which I still have a concern in an emergency. If we straightened out some of those switchbacks, I'm not sure why the director of athletics likes switchbacks versus long, straight, safe ramps. But if we straighten that out as well, I, it also reduces the non-conformity. The switchbacks are almost, well, it's far over halfway in the, in the setback area. So I, I don't understand why we would need to, you know, allow that additional non-conformity. And I also.
Can I just speak to that? I know exactly what the director was.
Rant or whatever.
Go ahead. The concern is that, that if you do straighten that line out, it follows the fence line of the field. And by fire regulation, we're not going to be allowed to have people standing in the way of the, the grandstand egress. So as you've seen at these games, there's usually a longstanding group of, of spectators along that fence line. And that's what Jeff was trying to allow to remain.
So if we set back the ramp two feet or five feet, let's be more realistic. It still keeps it substantially more out of the setback line. I, I appreciate what you're saying and I acknowledge it when I go to a game. You're right, the kids that, I shouldn't limit it to kids, the people watching, whomever, whatever age, even people of Joanne's age. But sorry.
Just the same as your age, so.
Yeah, that's ironic, but yes, that's true. Anyways, there, there is a meeting ground and honestly, that's where I'm trying to go here, is not to just say no and not to just say yes, to come up with a happy place that is the best we can present. And, um, you know, it's just something there. So let, let's go with the rest of the commissioners. Ally, is there anything that you'd like to ask regarding these plans or options that you, you see as potential solutions or alternatives rather?
I echo what was said earlier about making the stadium longer. And maybe I just, I'm not into design, so I don't really understand why, so I still wonder why it can't be longer. So yeah, I just echo what Joanne and Stephen were saying earlier about that. It's really, because I feel like that is a way that we could make it work, like kind of what Stephen was getting at. But yeah, that's what I have to say.
I have a question about the height of the grant, of the press box. Cause I think that's a sticking point for the neighbors, because that's the piece that's sticking up over the hedgerow, which is deteriorating apparently. Why, what, what within the design, what is the design decision that led you to make the press box taller than it is currently?
Um, that was just the, the added height was because of adding separation between the storage building roof and the, the grandstand. If I go back to the images.
So it really does hit, it really does hinge on that storage building's height.
Yeah. Now, not knowing the, the, all the history of this, you see this paneling that's on the underside of the ceiling?
Yep.
I imagine that was added at a later date because there wasn't adequate fall protection below the seats.
Yeah.
But that also became the roof for the CMU building. So when that, when the structure gets reconstructed, that roof goes away. And as one of the public had mentioned, that there's a musty smell in the storage area. It's partly due to that roof not being weatherproof and also partly due to some rodent damage that's occurred over the years. So there's some holes in the, the concrete facade and all of that is intended to be addressed as part of this project.
And, and that, I know this sounds simplistic, that building cannot be, the height of that building can't be brought down at the time of the roof removal and replacement?
The, the storage building? Well, that, that, we have been discussing that tonight and, um, you know, that would be the, the school's call if they want to address that. I believe it can be done. But overall, even with my alternative plan, that seems to help with the spectators. That press box is still going to be at approximately the same elevation, but we could, we could see what we can do. It's, it's under the 35 foot building height. And it's got, it's, the top platform is just a limited access filming platform. It's like a deck, but there is a safety railing on that. And the, we had discussions about making that rail in the backside slightly higher just because the cameramen filming the games aren't paying attention behind them. And we want to make it as safe as possible. So having the three and a half foot guard rail in the front, potentially a four foot in the back.
That's important to have railings for them. Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Um, Ram, I saw you joined us. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I echo what you and Joanne said. I'm not sure what is preventing like removing the top two rows and then expanding the width, you know, to offset the capacity concern.
On the, yeah, the setback problem.
Okay.
It would help with the setback problem. That doesn't help with the height issue, but it helps with the setback issue.
Right. And so what I'm hearing, it's this plan that's, is alternate two that's presented, addresses the spectators on those upper rows by eliminating those two red sections. And it does bring the structure a little further from the property line than what's existing. And like I mentioned early on, the press box, the new press box proposed on either scenario does come a little bit closer, further from the property line as well.
The concern about this alternate and the reason that it's an alternate is as always, cost is a factor. And from our preliminary looks into this, I'm not entirely sure with what was allocated, that that's going to be a possibility, especially if we're adding in some, some fairly significant reconstruction of the storage area.
That's not a hardship, no offense. That, that's a hardship that doesn't bear on the zoning regs. It's unfortunate finances is a concern, but I'm also, you know, secure in our community that we have a substantial amount of funding for making this so that it's the best that it can be instead of the cheapest it can be. It's how we've always proceeded in this town. I, I, I look forward to proceeding that way in the future. Laura, can I, are you still around? I'm sorry. I got a limited view on my screen. There you are. I, I'm trying to think of how to articulate this before I close the application.
Or do you want to close the application?
Well, that's sort of where I'm going with this. Do we want to table this or, you know, are, are we leaving it too open-ended? Before we even proceed to closing this application? It seems like we almost want them to come back with taking our input into account and a resubmission, which of course does not carry in any additional financial burden as far as a cost of application. But is that probably the most realistic method to proceed? Laura?
I have a question briefly. What is the approximate like length of time, start, end date for this construction? Like when are you planning on beginning this? If it is approved or if you come back and give another alternate site plan to us?
Demolition is planned for December with a construction date in the spring.
Okay. So you could come, they could come back and explain that.
Did, did you ever answer the question about the visitor stands?
It's not in the purview of this particular, well, it's not part of this application. It's something that can bring up to the board of education.
I see.
Um, and it's valid. You know, I know exactly what you're saying. It is sort of unfair that we almost have a dugout instead of a visitor stand, but that's, we can't make this application hinge on
No, I, I know.
Different components. It's sort of like the concession. That's why I've stopped bringing up the concession stand because that's something we'll deal with when, um, they do re-propose it.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I just, I just wanted to ask real quick for Kevin, you said, um, you said for this alternate site plan two, this was just preliminary. You said you didn't have any like specific information on capacity or anything like that, right?
Right.
So I think if, if we're going to want the plan two, we're going to have to push this back anyway.
Okay. So since Josh has finally said what needs to be said, I am going to make a motion that we table this application to our next regularly scheduled meeting. As time is not of the essence at this time, and it seems like there needs to be some forethought with what actually is being proposed. Uh, we would, we would hope that, you know, our input has given you some insight into what we're looking for, which is basically the same variance from the setback lines or a reduction. We're willing to work with you to make it happen, but more is going to be a hard sell. I'm, I'm just being upfront and saying it in black and white. Would someone like to second my motion?
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of tabling this motion for today?
I agree.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous. We do appreciate your time. We do appreciate the project. We thank you for being persistent and we look forward to seeing the solution that we can be a part of accepting. Thank you very much.
Okay. See you at next meeting.
Yes, look forward to it. All right. With that being said, we have made application 21-12 of Poynon Signs. Christopher Rahm, applicant, Antonio Five LLC for variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 9.3 to replace the existing menu board with a drive-through internally illuminated digital menu board at the property located at 1261 Hot Meadow Street. It doesn't say it, but it's better known as Dunkin' Donuts in the North Village area of the town. Would someone like to present on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Bill Gavigan. I'm with Poynon Signs. Uh, we're the sign manufacturer. Uh, we're the sign manufacturer uh, for the Dunkin' Donuts. And uh, we, we're, we're here today to try to see if we can gain approval to uh, put in a digital menu board uh, component uh, into the drive-through area. Uh, the zoning regulations uh, currently does not allow for internally illuminated signage. Um, and this, I guess, falls into uh, that category. Um, one of the things I would say is every town kind of looks at this different and I've been to several of these meetings, um, really just, you know, with, with the way that some of the regulations are written and um, menu boards sometimes are separate and in this case, they happen to fall into uh, signage. Um, and, and I understand the, the relation, uh, but the, the, the menu board itself is, is more of the order point um, within the drive-through and not necessarily branding as, as signage would be. Uh, in this case, the, the new image for, for Dunkin' Donuts, this is where this is all kind of coming into play. I'm sure everyone has seen that there's uh, new image basically dropping off the um, the donuts and, and rebranding themselves to Dunkin'. And um, with that, a lot of the new technology is kind of being brought into that new remodeled image. Uh, and with that, one of the main required components to these new re, new stores or remodels, uh, any of the next gen projects, uh, the brand is really trying to um, bring in a lot of that digital uh, current technology that uh, they've really kind of been putting off, I think, until this new image for, for different reasons. Um, the, these boards are essentially their TV screens. Um, so I think a lot of, a lot of towns are apprehensive. They look at it as a digital sign or an internally illuminated sign. It's, it's, I understand the need for or some of the, the towns staying away from digital signage uh, that are out by the road on the pylon signs, branding, things like that. Obviously, that's what I do. So I think there is a big benefit to those, but this is sometimes thought of as a similar thing, but it's really kind of different. Being a TV screen, it, it's regulated. Um, it, it's, it's able to adjust the, if it's too bright. I know that's a lot of times a concern with some of the towns. Uh, that can always be adjusted. Um, they actually do self-adjust as well with the ambient light. So at night, um, the screen will kind of dim down because not as much light is needed to these screens uh, as it is during the day when it's fighting against the sun. Um, but for, for the most part, um, you know, these, these are meant to replace the old static menu boards and I'm sure most of you have spent some time through a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through and a lot of those static ones. The lighting can go out. There are sloppy, to say the least. I think a lot of them, uh, the components fall out, the framework falls out, the lighting goes out in sections. These new digital boards are clean, crisp, they're even, um, and they're gonna continue to stay that way. Uh, either, it's like a TV screen. It's, if, if there's an issue, it's just not gonna work. Uh, and they're obviously gonna correct that right away because they need their guests to be able to read their menu items and, and you know, be able to order quickly and promptly and, and, and kind of keep the drive-through moving. Um, so the, 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 the main part of this is to try to update to the brand standard. Um, and to try to improve the drive-through experience for, for the guests. I mean, a lot of research has been put into these. And, and the idea of it is this is creating a better drive-through experience for the, for the guests.
Do you have a display to show how it looks like?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, you actually have two different proposals that came in the packet. One is, you know, it's got the two screens with the column in the middle.
Yep.
Your other proposal that we got has, it's, I don't know if it was a as-built or, but it's got a separate pole that you order from and then two screens next to it. Uh, let me see if I can find it. This is it. Give it a sec.
Right, right. So, so that was the first one, uh, that, that, that it's, there's two layout options to the drive-through. Um, and, and the first one with the two separate pieces, the separate menu board and the canopy. The canopy is considered the order point. The speaker is within that, that vertical column. So the brand has the vertical column canopy with the separate menu board, five and a half feet away angled. Um, so when you pull up, you can, you can see the menu board separate. Um, in this case, it was preferred and supposed to be what they call the all-in-one, where it's the canopy with the menu board attached one screen on each side of that.
Yeah.
So uh, I'm sorry for that confusion. The first submission was the two-part. Um, and then it was deemed by the, the franchise group that they would like to go with the all-in-one unit where it's all combined to one. And I think the idea on that too was to also try to be looking for a smaller footprint in, 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 in trying to ask for uh, the variance to be granted. Uh, so, so going to that, you, really, I thought we got that switched over where um, the group wouldn't have any confusion to, to have to look at both of them. Uh, the submission should be for that all-in-one canopy that, that, that you showed.
No worries. Is this the same board that we approved for the other Dunkin' Donuts in West Simsbury? Or is it a different setup?
Yep, no, the one on Albany um, Turnpike, that one is the two-piece option.
Okay.
So that is the canopy with the separate menu board. The screens are the same, the board is the same. It's just really how they work together with that canopy. It's, it's again, uh, meant to just be a smaller footprint.
Do you, I know this is a left field one, but we also had this presented to us by McDonald's. Do you know? I, I haven't been to McDonald's in a long time. Do they have the side by, the two-part of the one part?
The, the McDonald's, from what I've seen, and I don't work with McDonald's, but, but I've, I've spent plenty of time in those drive-throughs too. Um, unfortunately, and uh, it's uh, I've only seen the two-piece option. They always have a different version of the canopy that you order from and then the menu board is separate. I haven't seen them with an all-in-one unit.
My question is um, how, where this is gonna face? Is this gonna face the road Route ten or is it gonna face? Is it gonna be more perpendicular to Route ten?
It's, it, it is gonna be, I, I guess the best way to say it is um, in the same spot that the existing menu board is. The existing menu board is, is straight to the curb and it's, it's just past the radius, so it's not directly facing back, but it's on an angle where, where you won't see those screens from the street.
Okay.
And there's also trees behind it, but even on that slight angle, um, it, it's, it's not visible to the road.
It's actually behind the building. The whole building blocks.
Well, yeah, I didn't know because on this, it looks kind of like it, I know this is just a mock-up, but I just wanted to know if it was gonna be shining on the street, but no, it's not.
Yeah, no, it, it'll be, it'll be square to, to the road.
Okay.
Or to, to the curb.
To the curb, okay.
Yeah.
So just to ask it, this looks like it's a reduction in size of menu board. Is that correct?
Absolutely is, yeah. Yeah, the existing menu board, what's that?
Is it taller?
Uh, well, with the canopy, it would be taller.
Little bit taller.
Um, if there's a standalone menu board, no, it's actually shorter.
That was, okay, but the canopy part is taller.
The canopy part is, is meant to provide some lighting, protected area from the weather. Um, but you know, that, that makes it higher. That gives you roughly, depending on where it sits, it's about a ten-foot clearance. But the boards themselves, they're gonna be down um, without having the drawing. In fact, I think they're probably about, about six feet total in height. Where I think the, the current menu board is probably about, if I remember correctly, the old style is uh, seven and a half, I think. Um, and, and actually much wider. The um, existing menu board there right now is about eleven feet wide.
Yeah.
And this is gonna be about six feet.
Okay.
With the canopy.
Is there any members of the general public that would like to speak on this application? Okay, just asking. Um, let's switch back to our commissioners. Josh, what type of questions do you have on this application?
So I think I'm gonna ask the exact same question I asked for the other Dunkin' Donuts. Um, just to be clear, you know, this sign isn't gonna change like every five minutes. It's gonna change, you know, maybe breakfast, lunch, dinner, something like that.
Yeah, Josh, good, good question.
Handful of times today.
Yeah, it's um, everything on the board, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a menu board. Nothing moves, nothing scrolls, nothing changes. The only thing that, that does have any activity to it is in the bottom, used to be right, I think they recently moved it to the less, left side uh, screen. On the bottom corner, it's just order confirmation square. So as you're placing your order, it populates into that space and gives you a total. Other than that, you're, you're absolutely right. It'll, it'll switch. I don't even know really that there's much of a, a change from lunch to dinner because it's pretty much, it's Dunkin' Donuts. I think the, the menu is pretty consistent.
Ally, do you have any questions or comments on this application?
I'm a little confused as to the variance that you need because we're all talking about it being size reduction already. So can you just go more into that?
Go into the, the purpose of the variance, Ally, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, it, like, from, from my understanding, it's, it's, we're, we're seeking a variance for the um, internally illuminated. Um, being that it's categorized as a sign and it's internally illuminated, um, it, it, that's, I think where it falls into that category.
Perfectly nailed. Signage is, yeah, not in compliance.
I just noticed too, I didn't even read it before. Your hardship is um, one of the things is it's safer to change, which I didn't even catch that till I just read that, then sending someone out.
I mean, that's definitely, it's, it's, it's somewhat of a safety issue in the sense of sending a manager out, um, you know, a teenager out to change out things in the menu board, open it up because you got the doors, you have to open it up. You're changing things out, traffic is still coming through, whether or not you're putting cones out, things like that. And then of course, the weather of the winter, trying to send somebody out there, not only dealing with the traffic, but then the weather conditions. The manager now can change everything. Again, it's just technology, right? Being able to remotely be able to make any adjustments to that. Um, and, and I'm sure the brand could do things remotely, but I don't think it works that way. I think it's more on the store level. Um, so the managers are in there actually uh, you know, making, making the changes as needed to the board. I think it's mostly just updating prices more than anything else.
It's an interesting thing I hadn't thought of. Ram, what you got going on for your thoughts and questions?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask about the hardship, uh, but you already asked. And in addition, in addition to what you said, um, Bill, um, the hardship is uh, the requirement from the franchise. Is that what I heard?
Right, yeah. It's, 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 it's being a national brand, it's, it's one of their brand standards now. Um, that, that is a, a, a big requirement um, for their projects, uh, not only outside but inside. And, and a lot of it, again, through lots of research, everything is meant to improve the guest experience and speed up the process. Um, so all of those digital components inside and outside, they all kind of integrate together and it's meant to serve those two purposes.
Okay. Joanne, do you have any additional questions, comments? Okay, Laura, at this point, I'm going to close the application. But should I have Joanne step in as chair since I have a conflict of interests?
You can go ahead and do that. You're planning on recusing yourself, so it's probably cleaner just to let her handle it.
All right, Joanne, over to you.
All right, so I'll make them, uh, do we have any more conversation from anyone else? Before we close it. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we close discussion at this time on application twenty-one dash twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so discussion is, public uh, weigh-in is closed. We as a board can discuss our thoughts before we vote ourselves. Um, does anyone have anything they want to say? Does any of the board members have anything they would like to clarify?
Um, the, the only thing I'd like to bring up is um, I see you, uh, back in February when we discussed the um, the one on uh, Route forty-four. Um, it looks like we, sorry, let me, I, I'm reading our, our minutes from then. Um, we made a note that we could potentially bring up with the zoning commission to get um, you know, have them take a look at the rules regarding specifically these menu boards. Because we have, you know, we have had this come up several times now. Um, and I think that's just something we should, we should seriously consider because not to say that it's a waste of our time, but it's, it's something that keeps coming up and I feel like it's something that should be just addressed in code that this uh, internal lighting, that the, you know, these menu boards should potentially be an exception to that.
Um, we can definitely mention it to zoning. I think one of the advantages to keeping it the way it is is that each individual sign can be considered for its own merits because different companies will come to us with different um, you know, norms that they're trying to set for their company and that may become a slippery slope for us to let that be kind of a blanket. You know, the internally lit signage is kind of a longstanding, or the, the desire to not have it is a longstanding, I'm gonna say it, tradition in Simsbury and it's one of the reasons that our main road is so um, pleasant to drive down because we don't have a lot of that kind of commercial signage um, happening. So um, we can mention it, but I think that being able to weigh in on these each individually is an advantage for us in a way. I know there's a lot of things that we've come across in the last few years that, you know, life is different now than it was forty years ago or fifty years ago when they did these zoning regs, but this one is, it could really be a slippery slope because so many um, businesses are coming and going and technology is changing all the time. So I would be afraid to lose the control we have on that, controlling that technology. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, so.
Good point was me, um, about the safety of the employees, um, and considering that, especially in rainy weather, winter weather and whatnot.
Yeah.
Um, the fact that the sign is actually facing away from the road. Um, there's trees, it's behind the building, it looks smaller, I think, are all um, good aspects to consider um, with this proposal that's been presented to us.
Yeah, and the fact that the um, the brightness of it, I guess, adjusts to the atmosphere, so that is an advantage too. And the fact that it doesn't change constantly all day long, it's not a blinking sign, is important. Um, all these things are things we like to have control over, knowing these things before we approve it. Does anyone else have anything else? All right, that being said, can we um, make a, now I make a motion to vote? Is that what I'm doing? Laura?
Uh, someone can make a motion to approve the application and then if you want to go ahead with it, a jay or nay?
And you have to include the hardship.
Yeah, I'll include the hardships. Um, I'll just, I'll just read it in. I've got it. Uh, application, I would like to make a motion to approve application twenty-one dash twelve of Poyant Signs Christopher Rom, applicant Antonio Five LLC, Stephen Antonio, for a variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section nine point three to replace the existing menu board with a drive-through internally illuminated digital menu board at the property located at twelve sixty-one Hot Meadow Street. Assessors map one oh five, block four oh three and lot zero one nine, zone B two. The hardships being uh, first that this is the, the uh, company standard for this particular restaurant. And so this brings the restaurant into the current accepted technology that this restaurant is using. And um, it will also allow pricing and messaging to be changed remotely, so as not to require a person to go out into the driveway to physically change the board. Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, folks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you.
You too.
You too.
Um, well, with that, I'm gonna take back over. Is that okay, Joanne? Okay, um, moving along to the final part of our meeting, but I do have something I want to discuss afterwards. But did anyone or everyone have the opportunity to review our minutes from August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one?
I did review them. I didn't see anything. I wasn't there, so um, I missed a good one. I'm sorry I missed that meeting. Um, it was an interesting meeting.
It was like a real one.
Yeah, that was very interesting. I, I read the whole thing. I thought it was quite interesting. Um, anyway, I didn't see any changes, obvious changes, but I wasn't there, so.
Yeah, I, I went through it to encompass the spirit of what transpired and uh, I didn't even catch any typos this time, Laura.
Neither.
Me neither.
No, it wasn't you. No wonder then. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-first, fifth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, nobody's left to be against or abstain, so it's unanimous. We do pass those minutes. Laura, my question that I alluded to is, what?
Sorry, I was talking to my dog. That's awkward.
Oh, where's the dog?
She's on, she's on, she's right next to me.
Cool. I wish my dog would, I like when the dog, my feet.
Forgot that I wasn't on mute. I'm going to mute myself now.
Okay.
Um, my question for Laura was, we used to have to make a motion in the affirmative. And Joanne, you'll remember this too. Remember we used to make a motion in the affirmative?
I said, make a motion to approve.
Yeah, and then we would close the meeting. We should be doing that, shouldn't we? Because I've sort of forgotten.
You close the meeting and then you make the motion to approve. Right? You close discussion, public discussion, and then you have the, the, we discuss whatever else we want to discuss. And then we make a motion to approve.
Okay, and then we can move, we can vote against it at that juncture if we're not into it.
If you always do it in the affirmative, is that just?
That is what you're supposed to.
Is that just to be, that's Robert's rules, or is that's just Robert's rules? It's not just to be like optimistic, nice people.
No, it's, it's part of Robert's rules. They, they always say to make it here.
Yeah, we used to do it that way when I was way back in a sorority in college. We always did it that way.
Yeah, well, we used to always tell someone a disclaimer to an applicant, like, we're gonna say in the positive, but we might shut you down in five minutes.
And we could clarify that with people. We don't ever clarify that with people, but we could.
Yeah, well, we haven't really had any gray areas. Everything's been, you know, we've all been on the same page. So, you know, even tonight, eh, I think we worked as a cohesive team and we have, I look, honestly, I look forward to them coming back with something that's, um, less non-conforming.
Yeah.
So with that being said, um, well, there's two pages to our agenda tonight. Well, the only thing on the last page is adjournments.
We're done.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting of, what is today's date? October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Stephen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's nobody left to say no or abstain, so thank you all for your time. I look forward to seeing you again soon and good night.